United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with reason and justice for all.
Confirm any technical sessions? I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, Merry Christmas. Public comment? Morning Laura.
Morning Laura.
What? What's happening? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Laura Kristianowski, Potsville, Pennsylvania. On Monday at 10 o'clock, I have my tax assessment appeal here. And no one from the city showed, no one from the school district showed, but the county showed in the form of this person who keeps time. Who keeps the time. It was very interesting.
Somebody like.
Chill boots.
Guess I breathed.
Is it safe?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure, the place might blow up. So it was a very interesting experience because this gentleman who did appear, his sole thing for sitting there for 45 minutes was to enter the camera card, which one would imagine was already there. But what was very interesting to me was that the Constitution says that I have the right to justice. And it's really questionable if I'm going to get justice, in my opinion. Because everything was so chaotic, there's no place to put papers, they're falling all over the place, and I don't even know if the record was officially entered into the hearing at all. I mean, the question was if people had actually received the packets. Well, I have little green cards from the post office that everybody received the packet, including the court, because it was filed and date stamped on the paperwork. So what's really interesting is my documents were basically called papers. I can have a piece of paper and nothing's on it. The fact of the matter is, most of the documents in there were public records, they were photographs. So I have, I honestly do not trust our court system when we as just ordinary citizens are somehow expected to be the same as an attorney. And to keep all of the facts straight when even first year attorneys make boo-boos and lose cases because they didn't follow all of these 4,000 rules of civil procedure. So it will be interesting to see what happens, and it will also be interesting to see what the outcome is, because you know, the bottom line is, everybody supposedly has a job to do. And my job as a citizen is basically to do what the law requires. If I tell you that buildings are being done without building permits, and they're being done right now, I've reported it to the tax collector, Chrissy, that there were buildings being done in Potsville without permits. And it appears that the system breaks down at that point. Because the law basically says, as I understand it, that they can file an action in their day, because you have a best, you have a financial interest in making sure that you get the permits, because then you're going to get your taxes. But when nobody does what they're supposed to do, and I did what I was supposed to do, it cost me thousands of dollars to do what was right. And 15 years later, it never even made it into court. But somehow, I'm supposed to trust this system. It's rotten to the core. And frankly, we're headed for a depression that is going to be worse than 1929. And we are going to see things that, I think they're really heading for a civil war. And people who think they're safe are going to be in deep doo-doo. I hope you have a good Thanksgiving.
Federal public comment?
Morning Jeremy.
Morning.
Jeff Donco Palo, I'll try to do this quick because I got a lot to cover. I know yous are thankful that I wasn't here for the last meeting.
Those are Thanksgiving presents.
So I'll bring up Ms. Gaffney again, no explanation on the FMLA, I'll continue bringing out Ms. Stevens, nothing on that, proof of the paperwork from the DA, which was requested multiple times. Any updates on the third party investigation on the maintenance person that was hired?
Laura didn't know he was flipping ethics and everything, so that's all I know.
Okay. Moving along with that. I found it funny after the last meeting that I was at, him and Mr. Mayhaw, I'm walking down the hall, Kevin had to point out who I was to him, and he had it run his mouth, gentleman that was hired, going down the hallway, it was pretty funny. There were actually some witnesses that were elected officials here as well. So it was more kindergarten like Kevin, it was, yeah, it's a pretty funny name. Why'd you point me out though, so I know who he is? Vision fees, I got that answer already. McNeeson Wallace being hired for legal services, is there a certain thing that they're being hired for? And schedule of fees that was not made public either?
That would be part of the contract, I have an honorary rate for the different staff that they have, basically for general labor negotiations, any labor work that's come up, he's let their gowns.
Like especially for when we get a union contract negotiation, if there's something that's outside the scope, that's like the labor union from Philly, whatever comes up for something.
And the court admin position that was being on the par today, was that posted anywhere for hire?
I don't, I don't know. Who don't believe stats?
You believe? It wasn't out in the hallway, that's why I'm trying to figure out where it was posted at. Because if I can begin really quick, I have the, instead of 16 days of Christmas, we're going to do 16 days of Glenn Roth. Back on October 17, 2021, he stated on record that he was promised a job in the court admin office by Horny Howe, George Alkovej. Next one, second day of Glenn's Christmas. Boots, you were on record stating that Glenn wrongly advised the county multiple times on the Jane Doe litigation. He also contributed to a solicitor that was suspended by the Supreme Court that did not renew his license. Fourth day, he vehemently supported George Alkovej. Larry, you were against Mr. Roth, and also Mr. Bender, if I recall a conversation of me and you had, said that both of them would be gone if you came here, now we're going to hire him at $60,000 a year as a clerk, a law clerk. He also is on multiple videos, sleeping on the job, right for David, after a long night at the Reverb concert down in Redding, while first responders were standing right over there being praised by the commissioners for the pile on Interstate 81. He literally slept there, on the job, or playing on his phone as well. So I'm not sure what happened to his $100,000 state job, but now he's coming here for $60, to a county that he helped destroy. He was a huge defendant with the county for the Jane Doe cases, I don't even know if Jane Doe five is still going. But he contributed to irreparable damage to the county. On the eighth day, he also refused to inventory George Alkovej's devices that were part of his lawsuits.
Tell me Jeff.
Okay, can I finish my call of days here? Ninth day, he used LexisNexis to search former friends and colleagues, which that same action by other employees of the county resulted in major reprimands and suspensions. Tenth day, he was using county emails to find out the best places for pizza in 44. The 11th day, he was involved in Jane Doe five, I don't know if there's any update on that, I think the taxpayers deserve to know that. If he's still involved in that, how can we hire him? Twelfth day, his leadership had 158 properties removed from a tax sale with his oversight because they bought it. Thirteenth day, he contributed a lot of money to George and Theresa Gaffney's campaign, George Alkovej and Theresa Gaffney. Fourteenth, he allowed the mountain of a shit show over there at the tax claim office. Larry, you went over and witnessed it with me, three foot tall. I don't know if anyone's seen that office lately, I just stopped in there today to get some information on a property. You could eat off the floor in there, it's completely clean, there's no Twinkies or booze that Deb Dash was worried about. Fifteenth day, he never requested back any devices or the county-owned radio that was improperly used and asked by multiple police chiefs and the sheriff to be returned. And lastly, him and Deb Dash and another employee covered up some of the shady transactions, a bunch of paperwork that resulted in lawsuits on properties. So this, ladies and gentlemen, is who we are looking to hire. For a clerk position in the county admin at over $60,000 a year. You guys move forward with this, shame on you, but he drove the county into the ground, along with a few others that were sitting here, and that we're going to reward him. That seems like that's what happens here. The people that are victimized, you have reprimanded. People that should be reprimanded, like Mr. Alkovej still getting a pension, and now we're going to bring him back at $60,000 a year. Should be ashamed of yourselves if he's doing it.
Federal public comment?
Morning.
Good morning, Mark Mark at Court Administrator, I just wanted to inquire about pars and executive session, will that be next week?
Well, I don't know if we're going to have an executive session.
I'm sorry?
I don't know if there's going to be a need for an executive session.
Next, but if there is a need, will it be next week?
If there's a need, it would be next week.
And that?
That's what happens by, by, or whatever.
And that includes the recent pars that were submitted by a court administration?
There would if there would be an executive session.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
It would have been polite to let the court know, rather than say, come down here for an executive session today, because you're wasting your time to be here.
Yes ma'am.
It would have been polite for the commissioners to let us know.
Judge, I just, okay, Judge Russell, this morning, Mark was supposed to talk to me earlier this morning, and he didn't get in contact with me because I had a conversation with him the other day, and he said we would continue this conversation this morning. And this was just decided just about 10 minutes ago, 15 minutes ago, in the solicitor's chamber.
I represent the judicial branch.
Yes, and you're the person that's hiring Glenn Roth?
To recognize my position and the judicial branch.
Yes ma'am, just like it would be polite if you would recognize the commissioners' R branch.
I do. I do.
Okay, thank you Judge Russell.
Mr. Hess? Do you want?
Yes you do.
Mr. Hederson?
As you belong to the court's office.
Thank you.
Well, any other public comment? Two loud committee meeting, adult probation office?
Good morning, CJ Bganski with adult probation, we have two items for your approval on the agenda today. The first is for the approval for the purchase of operator VR training system. Now, the cost of this system is $59,860. The purchase of this system and any further costs associated with the system will be paid on using vendor supervision fees. Number two, approval to submit an application to the Office of Justice Programs within the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for fiscal year 2526 for its continuing county adult probation program. The county's allocation cycle will be $215,721.
Thank you. Drug and alcohol?
Good morning, John Ray, drug and alcohol. I just have one item today, requesting approval for submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the 2526 intermediate punishment treatment program. This is a yearly grant that we apply for to support the Schuylkill County Restriction Probation Plan, that the drug and alcohol program and adult probation office work together on. Thank you.
Good morning.
Carl Rumble, adult probation services, two items today. First, requesting approval of an agreement with Valier and Counseling Associates Incorporated of Foldsville. They provide counseling services and rates are as follows. Psychological evaluations are $2,500. Detective parenting evaluation is at $1,500. Polygraph examinations are at $375 per unit. Psychosexual evaluations are at $1,500. Individual therapy is at $95 per hour. Term of this agreement is September 1, 2025 to June 30, 2026. Second, we have an item as a memorandum of understanding agreement between the county and the Pennsylvania Children Youth Administrators Association, which is within the scope of the CCCAP, County Commission Association of Pennsylvania. This is to bring about a virtual reality training program through Accenture avenues. The county fee is determined according to a weighted system, this is the same system by which our dues to the PCYA organization are determined. Our portion of the fee is projected at this point in time to be $4,932. Final fee may be slightly higher or slightly lower, depending on the ultimate number of counties you sign on. Within the agreement itself, it's a listing of all those counties who have expressed their interest, and I believe we're up to 35 separate counties at this point in time. The initial year of this agreement included, well, I'm not sure if it was a one-year agreement or not, currently Daughn, Cumberland, York County are using the program. And by the added interest of those other counties, it's bringing the cost down for them and for everybody. Ultimately, the additional fees with this project include headsets, $1,500 each, licensing for the program that goes with that, is $500 annually. Ultimately, what this will allow is a training option that goes through scenarios where a supervisor could be in the earset watching the same thing that's happening as a caseworker is getting training on sort of field-like exercises to be prepared for what's out there in the world, instead of just book learning, online sort of. In terms of this agreement, there is an error on the term period for this. It is November 1, 2025 through October 31, 2026. I will note that the agreement appears to have a typo where the term period is first identified in its language, however scattered at least two other places within the document. It's clearly identified with an end date of October 31, and that it is a one-year agreement. That's what we have to do.
Thank you. Funding and zoning?
Good morning. First item is in funding and zoning. A motion is requested to authorize Schuylkill County to submit an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and National Resources on behalf of the Schuylkill and Carvin Counties for $18,000 peer grant to support the implementation work related to the September 11th National Memorial Trail, Nanthersite Connector feasibility study with a required $2,000 max security. from an outside partner. This motion also includes the approval of the resolution required by DCNR as part of its application process. The outside partner is the September 11th National Memorial Trail Alliance. Then the next item are in liquid fuels. A motion is requested to approve this middle of the 2025 annual liquid fuel reports to PennDOT. This includes a regular liquid fuels, Act 44, Act 89, and the local use. These reports must be submitted to PennDOT prior to January 31st, 2026. Next motion is requested to approve to encumber $200,000 for the replacement of County Bridge 63 Bridge Road over Deep Creek Road in Higgins Township. The next motion is a request to enter into an agreement with Alfred Vanishing Company for the engineering design for the replacement of the bridge, Bridge 63 Bridge Road. And the contract amount is $341,500, with $176,400 for environmental studies and preliminary engineering, $145,100 for final engineering, and $20,000 for contract and construction administration.
One more question, Lisa. Yeah, and this, going back to the trail thing, we've all met with the folks involved, and they really want the county entity to be in charge of the whole thing, not a local local roofers. Several miles between here and Jim Flutner, he's taking care. And once again, there's grant money available, and the trails partners are going to broke the matching funds. So at this point, there's no, no, no.
They're researching that to try and find someone who's going to manage the trail.
That's what I'm saying. It's on your time and Susan Smith's time, we're not investing a bunch of county money in this project.
Correct.
No.
Anyway, thank you, you and Susan, for picking the leadership and helping out with that stuff.
Public works?
Kevin Mayhaw, Public Works. One item on the agenda this morning, approval of a contract to Diversified Maintenance, RWS LLC, for the cleaning of Schuylkill County Courthouse from January 1st, 2026, to December 31st, 2027, at $145,474.56.
And that was the only bit?
That was the only bit. I, a lot went out, certainly.
I can tell you can.
Are there, or? One, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
MIS.
Tom Matts, MIS. Requesting approval to apply for fiscal year 2024 state and local cybersecurity grant through Pima. The application deadline is December 15th. This is what we do every year for our improved detective and security administration. Immediate approvals are placed in due to the deadline.
I'll make a motion that we apply for the state government.
Second, any question?
Commissioner Cora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heather Ensign?
Yes.
Commissioner Ha.
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Rice, Assistant Solicitor, on behalf of the Tax Claim Bureau. Approval of a resolution to appoint Catherine Manning, Lisi Yannick, Denise Perk, Nicole Peal, Joseph Gerchak, Janice Whitaker, Janet Whitaker, and Ryan Fisher, who are vested with all duties and powers thereunder for posting and service of all notices and to make personal service required by the Pennsylvania Real Estate Tax Sale Law, otherwise known as RATS. For all offset tax sales and filing with the Bureau, a written proof of service, sending forth the name of person served, date, time, and place of service, an attachment of a copy of the notice which was served. For your further edification, Commissioners, this is for the 2026 tax offset sale. The EOCs are the entry of claims that are impressive being sent out. When they come back, if they're not claimed, they have to be posted. So this is for the 2026 upcoming sale. The resolution that you had acted on several months ago was for the 2025 offset sale. And for the 2026 offset sale, it has to do with unpaid 2024 taxes. Thank you.
Minutes office?
Only three items. Good morning, Commissioners, only three items for informational purposes this morning. $147 by their judgment of courts, $700 for the Commissioner's office, $3,000 for the.
Any instructions?
Seeking approval, the latter party has dead the approved contract with the month of November 2025, and I am acting for the. I make a motion we approve the dead date, not the expect, for the month of November.
Second, any question?
Commissioner Cora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heather Ensign?
Yes.
Commissioner Ha.
Yes.
And on behalf of the Affordable Housing Trust on board, or as the full of the request to the year contract extension from July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2027, with the Schuylkill County Mortgage Broker Diversion Program, I contact 2020 back over seven. Last, on behalf of the Controllers' Office, seeking approval of a contract with Riverfront Green Nation Services LLC for cremation service and storage in the Controllers' Office. The term of the contract is January 1st, 2026, through December 31st, 2030. Notice and payment is via the B schedule.
Thank you. You got any sources? God, I can't hear.
No, not anything to turn. Good morning, Ms. Nearest, I believe, chief. Under information today, I have the Controllers' Office, a transfer of Audrey Condeas as an interim accounts payable clerk. She's, and that is effective 12/8/25. She is transferring from the Treasurer's Office, and her rate is per the union contract. Under court administration, I have an appointment of Glenn Roth as a law clerk in them's position effective 12/15/25. All appointments are coming during the physical, and all actions involving salary or positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Any new business?
What's your desire, sir?
Note, the December 10th, 2025 Commissioners meeting will be a meeting starting at 6:00 PM in the Commissioners Board Salary Board. Look for any executive assessors?
Not help.
Public comment for Salary Board?
You vote on it now or no?
No, that, and let me be clear, it is not the county administration that is hiring Mr. Roth, it is the courts. That's why I didn't appear today. So it'll be voted on at the next Salary Board meeting on the 10th.
I do it. The next question.
Okay.
So basically, the process will be, it was just presented today, the next week it comes up, and the Salary Board needs to approve the salary, or it is higher?
Salary.
Okay.
Because they do have 16 appointments.
Okay, so essentially.
Like 16 appointments.
Essentially, he's going to be hired now. I mean, can the Salary Board deny the salary?
There's options that the Salary Board can.
And that's a night meeting next week, right?
Yeah, it's next, next.
Sorry. Thank you.
Control and Resource Office?
I have a motion for the Controllers' Office to create a position as the interim accounts payable clerk. And that is effective 12/8/25. Under court administration, set the salary of Glenn Roth as a law clerk at $63,241. And that is effective 12/15/25.
They can have a motion for the Controllers' Office to create a position. And this is because Sharon lost the position and is now somebody's transferring over from the term of office to that position.
Some will, some will serve.
Second. Other question?
Commissioner Cora?
Yes.
Commissioner Heather Ensign?
Yes.
Commissioner Ha?
Yes.
Controller of the township? Yes.
Is there any new business for Salary Board?
No, you can turn, sir.
Thank you.